You can start.
Really? All right, gang, we're gonna get started.
Turn your microphones on.
Three minutes after. Then silence your phones too, please.
I'll just hide it.
Shut it off or do something. Everybody good? Pete should be here any time. Uh, Dan is not coming, but he may zoom in. He's a little under the weather. I have a feeling he won't. So, let's get started. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:04. It's, um, Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. And this is a special meeting. A joint meeting with the Marquette Township Board and the Marquette Township Planning Commission. And we're just gonna talk about some general similarities, what we wanna do this year and then the next few years. Now we repeat, but I'm gonna go ahead. We might as well do the pledge, okay?
Yeah.
Do you want to have them call their meeting to order first?
Um, you can, so they can do the pledge with us.
I don't know what you've traditionally done, but where I've been in the past, when you have multiple, they each call their meeting together.
Yeah, before we do the pledge, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were gonna do.
Yeah.
All right, we'll call a meeting to order here for Planning Commission, Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. It's at 10:00 PM.
Okay, should we do the pledge?
Sure.
Okay. My pledge is...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice of the world.
All right, Linda, roll call.
Yeah, so roll call is trustee Larue will be here shortly. Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yeah.
Clerk Katar is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Trustee Eversen is excused, is not here and excused. Staff present is manager Cangus and planner and zoning administrator Jason McCarthy.
Okay, you wanna take your roll call before the Jason...
Yep. Danny Weaver, go ahead.
Danny Ferraro, he goes next row.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, Mel Drive.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment Hall.
Linda Winslow, Laurel and Street, Marquette Township. Okay. Do we have any public comment, any emails written?
I did not get any emails or there is no one on Zoom for public comment.
Well, takes care of board member comment.
Pete, we got one at your spot.
All right, um, we can do this alternately. I can approve our agenda and then have the question of theirs.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Jim, you wanna do yours? Approve your agenda?
Uh, we don't have the approval for the agenda on here, so anyway.
Sure.
Okay, approval of the agenda. So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose?
Okay, thanks. All right, so I had solicited input for some policy discussion, what we think that the Township Board and Planning Commission might wanna have a discussion about this year. I did get a few items. Linda did give me a few, and those are really more board issues, so I am doing some follow-up on that. And we will probably have that at a future agenda. But these were the things that, um, I came up with and some of the things that I brought across from strategic planning. So, the, besides the fact that the two boards are required to meet once a year, uh, it's best, usually we do them in the first part of the year, but I wanted to make sure before we got into any budget discussions, um, that we had a chance to have a conversation. You will be working with the CIP shortly. What usually happens is the accountant will finish the June 30th books sometime in July, and then we'll use half a year, basically, to kinda guesstimate what the budget's gonna be. So she's got, you know, six months of good numbers that we can kinda use going forward for the 2022 budget. So, once that gets started, like around in July, then you'll be, we talked about this a little bit at one of your other meetings, you'll be getting requests, if possible, maybe not, maybe lots, from the department heads. So that'll, um, push you into your CIP discussion, and then that'll come back to us. So I'm not, again, 'cause I talk to you guys a lot about that at one of your meetings, I'm not gonna go into big, long explanation, but that's the, kinda the process going forward. So the purpose of us all meeting is, is to just, first of all, kinda meet each other. We've got new board members that, you know, the board hasn't all seen them, and you haven't seen ours unless you're watching each other's meetings. So it's just, it's kinda good to have that conversation, so we at least put the name with the face. But, um, I did pull out, like I said, a few things that the township should be working on, or we can have the discussion on whether we should work on them for this year, and then we can just have a general discussion for the next few years, roughly five years out. You had already worked on master plan and the ordinances, you've been updating those, and you've been really working on a lot of different things that apply to the whole township. So, um, one of the things that has come up more recently is the blight ordinance discussion. I started talking to Ryan probably, I think, I don't think I'd retired yet, so it might've been right around December sometime. Just asked him where we were, if we had any, um, teeth in the ordinance that we could actually enforce some of the... And that's what I was gonna do, is call Johnny DePietro, and I forgot, I should've written it down. He mentioned at one of our meetings, um, a few months back, that there were something like, I don't know if it's 60,000 or 600,000 people went up 550 to, um, the mountain last year alone. And they've been doing some counts. 60,000 doesn't sound like a lot for a whole year, but 600,000 sounds like a lot.
It's 60,000.
Is it 60? Okay.
Lake of the Clouds got 600,000.
Okay, that makes sense. And maybe it was, um, munising too.
Munising's over a million.
Is it?
We're projecting to have 1.5 this year.
Okay, I knew it was a lot, I just couldn't remember who was what. So 60,000 people are accessing and going by, um, on 550, all of our, I say "our" but it's a lot of state land. Our parks up there, you know, Harlow or Little Presque, and just, there's a lot of issues up there that we need to address from a blight standpoint, and that's why I kinda started talking to Ryan. I also ran through, uh, Trowbridge, I went through Bishop Woods. I didn't get any farther up, not 492, just to kinda see where we were with, um, code enforcement issues with blight. So Ryan said that he sent a couple letters out. I don't know, Jason, I know you did. It's not a big deal if you didn't, or, you know, trying to identify them, but you did. I did email you, uh, the letters that Jason sent out. I didn't necessarily wanna have it in the packet because of names and addresses, I wasn't sure if that was appropriate, but, um, you did have access to them. So I'd kinda like an update on that, Jason. And then, just to kinda a general discussion on where we think we need to go with enforcement. And I probably should've put that one first, and then the hiring, the code officer discussion. They're kind of tied in together, but, um, we have other ordinances that need to be enforced too, so it doesn't necessarily have to just be the blight side of it. So, Jase, where are we with the letters you sent out? Have you heard anything back? Are you, anybody ignoring you or following or...
I've heard rumors. Obviously, we, you know, carpet bombed, uh, 550, basically, with letters and, um, that section of, you know, what you were talking about. Essentially, they're all under time, we're, you know, they all have 30 days. So those letters went out, um, April, end of April, so, you know, third week of May, we'll start looking at them again. It is a time-consuming process, and just so everybody's clear, we don't have a blight ordinance in the township. We have a property maintenance code, which is fragmented, and it's an old resolution, and it exerted parts of one thing and added it into another. I've typed it up, I think, a couple times over the 10 years I've been here. But I have a good working document that I use, uh, to address property maintenance issues right now, minus having a blight ordinance. I think what the Planning Commission is working on right now is having something that has a little bit more teeth to it. Infractions, civil infractions. Everybody in the central Upper Peninsula, basically, right now is dealing with blight. And the more rural you get, the worse it is. I wish there was some kind of incentive, um, to have people clean up their properties. One thing that, um, I had on my mind for a number of years and didn't get it to paper, but Ryan did, was, uh, kind of a help guide, and it lists all of the different entities in the county that pick up either trash or iron. And I've actually seen a truck go by me in the last weekend, it said 906 Property Maintenance. And I was like, I gotta, I gotta track that guy down. So, yeah, like I said, everybody's dealing with this right now. Everybody's blight ordinances are fairly loose, and they're just, there seems to be like an initial barrage of letters that go out, but then the enforcement action of it is really where you need to follow through on. And it seems like, you know, it starts off in the spring, kinda has this cycle where we get busy with other, more pressing items, if you will, developments, um, things like that, site plans, and then it kinda wanes off into, um, into the late summer. What I will say, though, is that, um, the one particular property on 550, which is, you know, quasi-environmental hazard, I reached out to Eagle, so the former DEQ. They reached out to North Country Disposal, um, disposal, and they are supposed to be putting a couple of roll-off dumpsters on that property for them to put up at least their, um, the trash and refuse. And then, you know, some of the other items like appliances, you know, motors, vehicles. Vehicles are actually going for about 300 bucks a car right now, so metal prices are up. I don't know how to convey that to people necessarily, but, um, and then, you know, working further north on the left side, there was one right across the street from, um, Sugarloaf, the new parking lot, to the south of Sugarloaf. That property's been cleaned up completely. There's the, the vehicles that were outside are gone, and I suspect that the people that were living there might be gone too. You know, there's that one really bad one, that's the one that I'm kinda focused on. And now I have the Eagle involved too, because I do think it rises to a different level than just general property maintenance, if you will. There's one in Trowbridge right now that I understand there was a roll-off dumpster there for the winter. They put the, you know, all their stuff in there, and then they never paid their bills, so they came and picked up the dumpster and just dumped it in the yard. That's on Granite Street. I think, um, trustee Winslow made me aware of that one. I did give that one 48 hours, and I have recycled that letter to give them another 48 hours. But, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to get, um, you know, the sheriff's department involved, and if we do end up citing them, and I've been doing this for a long time and really haven't issued too many citations over the years because a lot of times you get that cooperation. As long as they're making progress, we really can't, you know, in my view anyway, cite people if they're continuously making progress. You know, some get cleaned up over time, and then they're right back to the way they were a couple years later, so. If, I think it's an important issue. If you look through the master plan and the master plan update, um, the comments that were made by the public, I think blight is a, is a real issue that people want to see addressed. And at some point, it may be, you know, we're interviewing another staff planner on Friday. Don't know how quickly we're gonna get that person here, if they're successful with their interview process. But I do think, you know, the code enforcement person, that's what I did in Ashland, basically. I was a planner one, and then I did code enforcement. So we actually just drove around and looked for the stuff. But in the city, we had a little bit different of a process where we could actually issue tickets right there and misdemeanors. Towards my end of my tenure in Ashland, we actually hired a former police officer. He knew everybody in town, and when he showed up to people's houses, um, it was almost instantaneous. There were also action groups in Ashland that would come out and help people with their, you know, church groups that would come on a Sunday with a couple of trucks and trailers, and they would help clean up. I don't know that we have that kind of, you know, civic service in our area. If we do, I haven't really heard of it. But I think it's a good idea, and I don't know how much, you know, a limited-term employee throughout the summer that just does nothing but code enforcement, I think it's kind of a viable option because I, I think it really does rise to the top of, you know, we've taken care of roads. We've done great things with our road system, and we continue to do that. We've upgraded our parks tremendously, and I think property values, or at least maintaining property values, should be, you know, high on, uh, the board's mind. And is that something that we can do to, you know, dedicate somebody throughout the summer months to kinda police that, if you will, or babysit that process? I, I think it would be advantageous to the community.
Well, especially this year because you're kind of overwhelmed, and even if you did have new help right now, to catch up.
Yeah, I had to bird dog somebody for a while.
Yeah, you're not gonna have time.
We've been blessed with Ryan and Isaac, who have been, you know, they hit the ground running pretty quickly. They didn't need a lot of handholding. You, you never know until you get that person in, in the chair whether or not, uh, they're gonna come up to speed real quick. But, you know, the applicant that we have now does have some code enforcement experience, and, and we'll, we'll flesh that out on Friday a little bit more. You know, maybe hold off on hiring somebody at this point. I think John and I kinda talked about that today. But, you know, if it's, if it's something that the board feels is important, then maybe you do move forward with somebody to come in and advertise it as somebody, you know, to somebody who may have had some security or, you know, some of these places, I will say, and this is being recorded, I suppose, some of these places are, uh, I would consider them to be somewhat dangerous. And I, I've been told that before, not to show up there unless you have, uh, you know, a police escort. So, um, that provides a whole nother level of challenge. You know, that's, that's basically my take. So, we are in the process, we have had some positive, um, responses from people. People calling and complaining, you know, to me, saying, why are you, you know, this is why. You know, we're focused on this this year, we wanna see it cleaned up. You know, here's, I, I gave you the resources to do it. We have a drop-off every, you know, first Wednesday, if you want to use that. Otherwise, here's a list of things that can help you. And you can be paid money for the items that you have in your yard, because quite honestly, um, you know, there are junk cars, there are unregistered vehicles. So I think the township has, in the, in the current property maintenance ordinance that we have, you're allowed to have one unregistered, unlicensed, inoperable vehicle in your yard. Anything else above and beyond that has to be, or should be removed from the property.
So the property maintenance doesn't really have any teeth, in other words?
Well, it has teeth, but it's just very fragmented, and I think that, and I think the Planning Commission agrees, that we're working on something that is much more, uh, direct.
So I think we talked about, you know, if you have a blight ordinance, I think you have more opportunities to look for, um, maybe some resources or funding. So blight is, means something totally different than code enforcement, probably the government.
So do we, in your opinion, because you've done this, do you think just going with the sheriff would be just as well? I mean, we're already paying extra money to have them, and I know they are actually hiring too. So they may be short-staffed, but would it be more advantageous for the township to just look to the sheriff rather than hiring another person?
I don't think it's within the sheriff's department's purview. I mean, they'll issue a citation if that's to the point that it gets, but they're not gonna like check up on properties.
So it's not, once the citation's issued, doesn't that become a civil infraction then, or is it responsible?
Correct, and if it's not paid, then it goes to court.
To the court.
And even if it, you know, a lot of these situations are people that don't have the wherewithal to get it done. And so that's why, um, you know, we provided that kind of guide for people with phone numbers and business names to, to be able to call and say, hey, I have this on my property, township's telling me I gotta get rid of it, can you help me out?
So what would a code enforcement officer do then? What, what would they do differently? They would follow up, they would, um, work with the resident to try to contact all these people?
Yeah, I just think more, more contact.
More one-on-one.
Because I'm just sending out letters. If they call, they call, if they, maybe they get the letter and they throw out the garbage. You know, there's all kinds of different scenarios out there. But I think, I think in our, in my experience, when it's been the most successful has been when it's constantly followed up on, and it's almost a 20-hour-a-week job, if you do it right.
Okay. Do we need a job description? Is it because it'd be our employee, right, or just a contract worker, or how, how does it end up being handled? You probably do it as a full-timer.
I, I wouldn't wanna pigeonhole something right now. Perhaps, uh, you put an RFP up for one of these businesses that are, you know, the 906 property maintenance guy comes to mind. I mean, could that person, uh, I don't know if they can be an employee at the township or, you know, that would be up to perhaps you guys and Roger, you know, smash that up, but, um, that's what I mean by some way to incentivize it, where these people are going around and looking for that, knocking on doors, saying, hey, can I take that off your property?
Yeah.
Be like, oh, yeah, because I just got a letter from the township, good timing, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, and, and we talked, I mean, this is an open discussion here, right?
Yeah.
So we, we've talked about incentivizing people and not punishing you.
Yeah.
I think you get a lot more, um, my mom would say a lot more bees with honey than, you know, or sugar than you would get with punishment. So, um, I see the person actually being someone reputable in our community that people trust and, um, can go and kind of create some kind of a relationship and clean the spots up. I mean, I like the action group concept. We have action groups to fix the park. We have some action group fixing a baseball field. I mean, maybe we have it within our own township to get some people to assist, other people to do things.
Yeah, we still need to have some kind of authority to...
Well, I think we need to hire someone. I agree with Jason. And I think it, I think it can't be the township employees today, and if you can figure out how to do a contract with someone, yay. Yay. And we're better off paying someone to pay for someone's dumpster than spending all the time Jason has to spend. I mean, if you dollar and cents some of this stuff out, just look at the people, they still throw their sofas out.
Yeah, just some kind of creativity, because it's not an isolated issue, and if we can crack that nut, I think we'd solve a lot of problems for people. You know, you know, everybody complains about roads in the rural areas, the rural townships in the central U.P. We've, we've really addressed that well. Now we can start kinda pecking down to lower levels of the other comments that people make in open discussion, whether it be at a, uh, you know, a community survey or a, uh, a master plan open house. Those, those comments really, to me, and they're all in the current master plan, so, um, you know, they hold a lot of sway to me, when, when somebody shows up and those are their concerns and, and they voice them like that, so. And I do, I believe that it's our, you know, it's our job to protect health, safety, and welfare. I think welfare, I think property values could be locked into welfare too.
And health too.
And health, yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't you rather live in a township that, that you get a lot of support?
It's important too, yeah.
I, I mean, really.
And I, I believe I do have that, uh, you know, a good reputation in the community.
Yeah.
And people do, you know, they call me up, and I'm pretty frank with them, just like I am with you all and have been for a while. Just explaining, hey, this is what it is, you know, I've got the board coming down on me, they wanna see this stuff cleaned up. You know, I'm just doing my job. Please help me out by, you know, abiding by this timeline, or if you need a little extra time, okay, I can work with you on that. But we need to see some progress, uh, almost immediately.
And you're 75 now, and you can't pick all that stuff up like you could when you were 45.
Yeah.
So, you know, really?
Yeah.
So where are the 45-year-olds? Let's ask them to help the 75-year-olds in their neighborhood. You don't need any help, your yard looks great.
Well, the board hadn't talked about this ever, so I, that's why I wanted to hear some of what your experience was, especially besides the, the letter.
Yeah, this, this time of year, it's, you know, before the leaves pop. It's, you know, we're coming out of a pandemic, everybody's on edge in ornery, and everybody's complaining against their neighbors, um, so.
And I would say too, like, blight ordinances are really common. I was actually surprised we didn't have one.
Yeah.
Considering our size and how active our community is. And one property you didn't mention was that one in front of TJ Maxx.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't wanna, everybody knows what, you know, I've been looking for a way to nuke that house for a while now, and, um...
Right, there's no way.
And I need the county's support too, quite honestly, because the county building inspector needs to deem that property unlivable. And if they do that, and maybe, you know, the township comes in and knocks it down, pays for the demo costs, and that gets assessed to the taxes of that gentleman, um, and we wash our hands of it. Or, you know, we, 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 we get it out of eminent domain or something. I don't know, there's all kinds of ways to do that. It does take the intestinal fortitude of the board to get that done. But I think these are the time, you know, we've got a brand-new highway coming through. We've got some great new developments in our community. And I'm just talking about the corridor now, but, you know, you're right. All of our pristine, uh, recreational opportunities up on 550 are kind of, you know, shaded by what you have to go through to get there. And it would be nice, you know, the young people taking over the 550 store, they're doing a nice job there, it looks great. Carrying on the tradition there of having that little quirky little fill-vil, uh, which I think is a great tourist destination, and they're adding, they're gonna be adding some short-term rentals there, additionally to what they have now, some little cabins, these little eco cabins. So, I don't know, Steve, what do you think? You've always got ideas about this stuff.
Well, you know, I agree. In fact, I drove 550 about a week or so ago, and there's a lot of, hm, blight. I'll be polite about that. You know, I wouldn't always be focused on what tourists might see because I know there are a lot of people that live next to it, and they see that every day.
It is a high, it's kind of a dense area there.
So they see, but they see it every day. And then there's other areas where tourists never drive by, where neighbors see it every day. And like I said, sooner or later, somebody's gonna come and want their taxes reduced because the value of their home has gone down. And I think that's absolutely fair. If the township can't protect my investment, my home, you know, I, I, I put money into it, I maintain it as, as best I can, and if the person living next to me doesn't, and that reflects on the value of my home, and that's my investment. And I would expect the township to assist me in maintaining the value of my home because I serve the people over there and have that gentleman clean that mess up.
Right.
You know, I can ask them, I can say, hey, can't you get rid of that? And he says, you know, I might need this 64 Chevy in 10 years. You know, so it's not always, oh, I've got this stuff here, and I don't know how to get rid of it. No, I need 400 tires in my yard because I feel good about having 400 tires in my yard. You know, so, and if, if it comes to that, people are gonna start insisting that their taxes go down. You know, because if I, if, if I have a house that's valued the same as somebody in Oakville Estates, but they don't live next to a dump, I'm not gonna pay the taxes that that guy pays. And I think that's what we're gonna start running up against. If we have more and more of this blight and we don't get this under control.
Yeah.
And I don't blame people for that.
I'm not a big proponent of, you know, big government, if you will, but I do think that some people that have to live next to that person for 20, 30 years aren't gonna necessarily call and complain to me because that person's gonna know who called. So I do think it falls back on the township a little bit to kinda inject ourselves into those situations and mitigate those situations, uh, as quickly as possible. In fact, um, I know that there was a process that we kinda had drawn out from Roger, and probably need to revisit that, but, um, that kinda draws up, I've always been under this, you know, the first letters to ask them to clean it up, second letters to tell them to clean it up, and then the third letter is saying, okay, this is your final notice, we're gonna cite you. It usually doesn't get to the third letter. Of course... Of course, these properties out on 550, once the leaves come up, they're kind of out of sight, out of mind. That one in particular, um, is starting to metastasize kind of towards the road a little bit. And that's when, you know, it kind of piqued my interest a little bit more. Um, and it's not just sometimes the junk in, or rubbish in the yard. It's also the condition of the exterior. And I know of three properties in particular that I'm thinking of right now. Uh, one is a little garage that's out on 550, right, right by Libber's Pit. And it's too close to the road. One, it's kind of fallen in itself. That, they got a letter and I don't, I haven't heard back on that. You kind of wait for a little while and follow up with them, of course. But, um, the other one's the exterior of another property up on 550. And then the other one is obviously our, uh, westernmost roundabout on the northeast side.
Pete, you had your hand up. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You know, uh, in conjunction with a person that we might hire to, uh, be the blight enforcer or facilitator, whatever you want to call it. Uh, how much did it cost, if you know, to print that nice glossy postcard that we got about our new recycling bins? Was that expensive?
I don't know. I, I wasn't involved with that too much. That was kind of a public works deal.
Oh, okay. Well, what I'm saying is what you could do is you could send out that as a mailer to the people in a certain district that you wanted to target. And then say, hey, you know, we've got a new, uh, cleanup program. I mean, whatever, you could be imaginative and say, you know, make it a friendly thing, like you say, incentivize it, you know? And then, uh, have something, you know, we'll be, we'll be sending around a, uh, one of our representatives to help you clean that up. So I would think that that would be a way of easing into it. And then you also, as a result of that, you might get people who are living next to areas as Steve mentioned, they want to be cleaned up. They could, you know, call in and say, hey, yes, there's this person over here. She's an old lady. She doesn't, she needs help, whatever. You know, I mean, I would think a public relations little campaign, if it's not too expensive.
Yeah, I remember, uh, I think it was 2012 or 13. Uh, it was in the spring and called TV6 and had our new car out there with, uh, the white car with our logo on it. And did a story saying, you know, hey, we're going to be coming around this year and.
Yeah.
You know, checking up on properties that way. But yeah, I mean, but all of our letters go out certified mail. I need to know that that person got the letter.
Right. No, I'm just talking about a, a, a preparatory step.
Preemptive flyer.
Where you could say, hey, we've got this program going now and we're going to be, you know, coming around and helping you clean up your property if you need it. And then they could call a number and, you know, just to ease it into, eat the idea into the community.
We could put it on the back of the utility bills, but we'd have to have something in place first to, to figure out who's going to do it or, you know, what the next step is.
Right, whoever that person that we would hire, you know?
I really miss our newsletter sometimes because that was always a way to like, write a little bit of a story or a blurb and then have that go out as part of a, you know, almost like a mini township super, or a newspaper, if you will. You know, it advertised all the events that we had. And oh, by the way, if your yard's, you know, has a bunch of stuff in it, uh, you know, representatives will be coming around to police that up, so.
Pete?
Uh, we, it's not always on 550. We've got some blighted areas right until our township right here. And sometime a good conversation with the sheriff's department. Because some of the blighted areas goes along with a drug problem and stuff like that. And I can name several of them where they are right now. But, uh, then we have to be consistent. We have to follow through and follow up on it. We can't just say it and don't do anything about it, you know? That's, you know, some of our problems. So we have to just follow through with it.
I think Janelle, in one of her first years here, that's all she did one summer was property maintenance. And it was very effective. And that's what I mean. Pete, Pete's, uh, brings up a good point about, you know, if we are able to hire that person or a person to do that, or at least dedicate some time to that, I would say probably 20 hours a week, maybe 10. I don't know. But, um, you have to be consistent with it more for it to be successful. And once word gets out after a couple of years of, you know, fairly restrict, or not restrictive, but strict enforcement of it, uh, the word does get out and people will take a little bit more pride. I just want people to take more pride in what they have.
You know, getting back to your comment, but put some out like the point sale material. Take pride in our community. And you know, we get the TV6 and the mine journal, little jab at it that we're trying to do. It gives us more pride in our community and we're doing so much here and so. And then we just follow through on some of it, you know? Shooting firecrackers off at, you know, two o'clock in the morning, the same thing. It's the same people. There's no secret about where they are or how they do it, you know? It's a blighted this, cars, it's junk in the road. You look at their windows and their drapes are just hanging with one on and one off. And the garage doors, no bottom to it, junk coming out of it. You know, we know. I mean, I ride by at least once a week to see if anything's done.
In a society that seems to be very polarized right now, there is, I think, two sides to that coin because some people don't perceive their stuff as, it's just stuff. It's not junk. I collected this, so we're eating this.
I've got a garage of treasures.
As long as it's in the garage, that's great.
Yard sculpture.
Yeah.
Well, I'll add this for the board's purposes to the next agenda and we can kind of chew on the code officer idea. Um, we've got, you know, you guys are already working on the ordinance. So, um, that'll kind of cover those two. And then by then, your 30 days will be up and we can figure out, you know, your second letter.
The second letter, yeah. Yeah, there is a process that we have to follow and sometimes, you know, if people don't get on it right away, then they wait and then the second letter come, you know, and it's just, it's frustrating. But I will say, some of my best relationships I've ever made in this career have been working with people on property maintenance issues, resolving differences between neighbors, whatever, getting something taken care of. People really appreciate that level. And that's why I like this level of government because it's the closest to the people and they're able to make impacts on people's lives. And I really, I guess I respect and honor that portion of the job.
At the MTA conference, one of the speakers has said that when we do things like this and you want to correct somebody, we keep talking and talking. And he said, the best thing to do is just stop talking and leave them talk. And see what's on their mind. You learn more that way and then you know how to correct it. How to approach it.
John, you had, you, you shut it off, but you.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the township board would get behind hiring someone to enforce whatever we come up with that's needed to aid the people that feel that they're suffering because of others letting things go. I think that, uh, serving notice that we're getting interested in having a coding officer, a code officer, that by itself will, will get to the people who are the abusers. And I think that we just simply need to indicate our interest and our willingness to spend township money to have enforcement take place if that's what's needed. And that's, that's what we need to do.
So we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yes.
And if you guys just to think about it, you know, what angles you want.
There's one thing that Northern students, they have a group that's going around and help clean up yards and stuff like that. And, uh, after I had my operation, somebody put a name in there and I said, no, no, I'll just book it enough not to accept it. But they do go around and they will help people. So maybe we can, you know, tie that into it and see, see if they're doing it first of all this year. You know, they might not be doing, but you know, if we get first of all, if we get people to help clean up your yard, it seems like the yard goes right into the paint, you know, it goes on and on, but.
John?
As I'm sitting here listening to the conversation, the thought occurs to me that we may have a one-time opportunity to help people without digging into township coppers if this American Recovery Act money comes through as it's supposed to and we can justify that as a legitimate expense. We may be able to do some really good things with that money that we had never really planned on getting. So I guess keep that in mind. We'll have to figure out whether or not we could justify it as a qualifying expense and know that we will be audited on every penny of that money. But just want to throw that out there. We could possibly do some really good things with, with township residents if they're willing to participate. So let's see what we can do with that. And, um, we have a little more guidance now. We haven't received any money yet and we'll only get half of it this year. So maybe we could do it over a period of two or three years. I think we have up until 2024 or something like that, spend this money when it comes in. So we just have to figure out with the powers that be, whether or not we could justify a program like that. Maybe some of it is COVID-related where people just haven't left their house other than to do the essential things and, and they're, um, refuse whatever keeps piling up. Um, if there's a way we can help people catch up, that might be a good thing.
It's a great idea. Okay, yeah.
Uh, this is, was the address to the planning commission. Did, we talked last, at the last meeting about whether the, uh, this very good draft ordinance that you put together, Jason, would be sent to Roger's app for review. Has that been done?
No, I didn't think it was ready for Roger's review yet because we had some other things to flesh out, including what is blight. You, you brought up some comments about.
Definitions being moved.
Right, and that, and I do have that noted.
Okay.
But to the point where as long as we're all in agreement and hopefully we're going to probably get pushed again because hopefully at our next meeting, we're going to do our mobile tours. So our next meeting, I think I put it on the bottom, is May 26th. So perhaps by that first meeting in June, I'll have Roger review that, provided that we can all agree on. I think we can agree on what blight is, but I wanted to get you that property maintenance ordinance. My goal is to kind of blend the two because the property maintenance ordinance really references, references the International Building Code, uh, standards. And there are some really good points in there about, you know, safety, particularly with regard to exterior windows, siding, things that you wouldn't normally associate with blight. So we have to figure out a way to kind of meld those two together. Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, Bernie.
Listening to you, I just, I just kind of smiled in that. There was a rental unit next to me and, uh, after being gone four and a half months and come back and looking at that, it took them two gigantic trailer loads after those people left to clean it up and that. It was something else in that. So that's another thing we may have to look at is the rental units in the township and the owners of those rental units, they're, they're interested in only one thing and that's the dollars coming in on a monthly basis and that. So we have to be concerned with what's happening in those units and that for the surrounding property owners and that. I don't have a problem with the rental units and that. They maintain and find, that's, that's their right. But it's amazing what some of the renters, they don't care. They buy something new with the old ones, just go out in the backyard and that too. So out the back, out the back door. When I got home and the snow left and everything else, I looked out the back, at my back deck and looked next door and there was a washer and a dryer and two mattresses and you name it, was out back underneath their deck and all over and that. So, um, one part was great when they left because they had to come in and clean it up and that. But that's an area to think about is the rental units. And so kind of how you do it, I don't know, but kind of just watch over them, see where they're at and maybe drive by them if we get an individual, so they know where it's at, so they can just take a, a drive-by. We'll tell a lot at the same time.
Most of those rental units have contracts with their renters and they, almost I would guess all have, um, some stipulations as to what they can and cannot do. So, um, yeah, it's the, it's the renters that are the problem, not the owners.
Well, the owner's going to have to enforce it.
The property owner is ultimately responsible.
That they will.
Danny had a comment.
But to start the thing, I would get to find out what do you want for a definition? There's enough definition of blight, of property, every city, every township, every, you know, garden. But, and then to what you said, start a little program of cleaning up our township and more pride into it and stuff like that. That'd be the start, you know?
So if they work on the ordinance to start with and then we talk about the code enforcement side of it, then, you know, in the next couple of meetings, we can meld again. I would be good. Danny, were you going to say something?
Oh, you know, I just wanted to, uh, what is, does the North Country Disposal have a policy about not picking up certain things? Like, do they pick up mattresses if people leave mattresses out on the curb?
No, no.
Well, that's a problem because. One of the, where I previously came from in Valparaiso, Indiana, you could put, you could put a, unless it was something that had like a hazardous waste on it, you could throw mattresses out there on the curb. They'd come by with a special truck with a claw. They'd pick that thing up and compress it.
But I feel that's where our Wednesdays or the first Wednesdays of the month, where we can go there and bring anything. Like, so if there's something that's not fitting in the garbage can or whatever, the owners, but the owners are ultimately responsible.
But why should it be, people pay taxes to have their garbage picked up?
And it'd be more for garbage.
I mean, North County Disposal, I mean, what's, shouldn't they, that be part of their deal? That they pick up mattresses, they pick up, uh, stuff like that?
No, that's, that's an expensive endeavor.
Yeah, it's free once.
And all the recycling and solid waste is all different now to them. John?
So. These issues are handled differently everywhere you go. Our garbage in the township is a fee. It's not a tax. It's a fee and it's provided to all single-family homes up to, I believe, four-unit residential structures. And it pays for curbside pickup of bagged garbage. That is the contract. If it's something the township, that the township wants to do something different, then we have to negotiate a new contract. That's what we need to do. I don't know that that would be a very cost-effective proposal because the contractor would have to equip himself with a brand-new vehicle to do that. And I can't imagine that's less than a quarter million dollars off the top of my head. I'm throwing darts here, but, um, I can't imagine that would be cheap. That being said, if it's a priority of the township, I'm sure North Country would be willing to work with us.
Well, they've got to figure out the 906 recycle too now. It's costing them, taking them more time to pick up all these recycling containers and putting them back. So they're already working through that, trying to figure out, you know, manpower and, and their days are starting sooner. I mean, I've heard all that already.
So, so I agree with Danny. I, that we have been some places too where everything is picked up. So you reduce the junk thrown in the places. And then if you, um, think about it, not everybody can haul their garbage up to 906. So those mattresses, I, I don't have a truck. I mean, I do have a truck, but, but I don't have a truck. And I'm, again, 75. And, you know, so that helping your neighbor kind of thing, you know, one, one day a year, we say, put out all your stuff and we're going to send a truck around to pick it up.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I don't know. And I agree, Danny, that I feel like my taxes pay for some of that too, but they don't. I, I know they don't, but, but, um, they could.
Or maybe one day a year, I mean, Lions Field is very centrally located in Trowbridge.
For Trowbridge.
At least section 16, right? So, I mean, perhaps you could have North Country one weekend a year, put some roll-offs in the parking area and just have people.
For your aroma, right?
But there are municipalities that do that once a year and they'll pick it up curbside.
Right.
I mean, don't they, even City of Marquette does that.
I think Nagani does.
Yeah, I think Nagani does that.
That's just it. I think it's more, um, we know, I think, what's needed. I think it's the board's job to figure out what kind of policy they want to implement.
Yeah.
So, so as a planning commission, let's ask the board to look at that.
What happened to Marquette with that? They don't do it anymore because they had so many, uh, students just leaving their old junk here. And they, the landlords have just put everything on the curb and now there's just piles and piles of that stuff because, you know, a lot of these kids are, not just kids, but, you know, other people moving out would just leave it there. And that costs the taxpayers a lot of money for all these people to.
But where does it go anyway? If it's junk, it's junk.
It's still laying out on the curb.
You know, it's not going to, it's not going to disappear. You know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, well, they'll disappear.
I mean, they'll take it home or the landlords will charge them to have it hauled away. I know that's what they do now.
You call that citywide homage deal.
John, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just want to make, make it clear that we do not have a pickup service that is so elaborate that would allow anything beyond what is allowed and permitted to be out front now. That's quite a bit. But if anybody's offended by a large mattress or a large quantity of glass or a large amount of tin or whatever, they can put it in their own vehicle and drive it out to the dump site, which is not all that far away. It's about a half hour away. And they can pay to have it dumped there. And I've done it myself. It's not a big deal and it is a well-run and you'd be well-received there as a customer. But I don't think we're in the position to start thinking about making our service pickup extensive enough to be beyond what they are permitted to pick up now. We just don't need that. This is not Birmingham. This is not any big city government that can afford that. And the township members are not ready to pay an excess tax to do that.
Well, we can talk about it.
We can ask about it.
John, what were you gonna say?
So I, I think Jim kind of hit home on part of the point I was gonna make in that most of the local cities that used to have these curbside collections don't do it anymore because they can't afford to do it anymore. Their revenues don't justify the program for them. So they've done programs similar to what we have. Marquette City has a refuse site down off 553. Ishbaming has a site over by the Ishbaming wastewater plant. Nagani has one off of 480. We have one in Nagani Township. And all of them have certain days of the month that you can bring bulk items for drop-off. It's still costing money, but it's more affordable than going door-to-door. If it's something the township wants to do, we have to find a way to pay for it. And keep in mind, we have a much smaller pocket than the local cities do because they can go up to 30 mils, we can go up to five. So we all have, we have to keep that all in perspective.
John, where did I read that if you have something, you can contact them and they'll come and pick it up and it's an extra charge for you for the resident? I read it somewhere or was that?
I would have to do some research on that. I'm not sure. That being said, you know, there's, there's some probably affordable solutions out there. We just have to make sure we can justify it. You have to pay for it somehow.
Okay, we'll talk about it again. We have like four minutes. Trail barriers for vehicles. I'm thinking, John, you were talking about making sure when they were on the trails that we wouldn't have cars. Some of the trails, you're talking about NTN trails, you know, or, or the Heritage Trail. They put up the barriers. In fact, I was part of that when I was on that board to make sure that cars aren't going down the trails. The top, the board can talk about this. That can be part of the planning, future discussion.
I think it's already been addressed, Lynn.
Has it?
Yeah, I mean, the Aron and Heritage Trail is the DNR's baby. And the DNR and Aron and Heritage Record Authority work very well together. And I think that issue was resolved at the end of last week with, starting with some signings. I actually did see a vehicle up there yesterday utilizing what is only a trail access that Menards easement that comes down the hill from the Aron and Heritage Trail and used to go to the gas station for the snowmobiles. That's the reason that we requested that easement from Menards and, and got it. So what I don't want to have happen is to lose that easement because of the fact that there's vehicles using it when it's in fact only for non-motorized or in the winter snowmobiles. So, but I think between Carol Fulcher and Rob Katona, I think that issue's been addressed.
Okay, sounds good. So have you guys talked about, the planning commission talked at all about like what you see working? Jason, you would have probably brought it up. And in the next four or five years, have you got, have you thought of anything that you'd like to see us focus on? Or have you had that conversation? Or do you still need to have it? Anything special that jumps out at you?
Land use-wise?
Yeah, whatever, zoning-wise, ordinance-wise.
We've been on top of things. I've introduced geodesic domes to the planning commission. People are getting very creative and this goes across the central peninsula right now. Properties that have been for sale for a long time are flying off the shelves. There's a lot of influx and people wanting to have a little piece of the UP. And they're being very creative with how they use them, whether they buy and they want to rent it out when they're not here, whether they want to use substandard structures, if you will, geodesic domes, tiny homes. I think our planning commission and board have been very ahead of that. We may change our minimum building standards and propose that to the board at some point based on the planning commission's acceptance or reaction to geodesic domes and those types of structures. If you really want to provide housing for all stages of life, I really think we can probably loosen those up a little bit. Because right now, we have, you know, 1,000 square foot minimum first-floor area. And then all walls have to be 20 feet in length at least. And that provision there was to kind of zone out double-wide trailers and mobile homes, if, if you didn't know that. But I do think that if we're gonna continue to be progressive and encourage, you know, all users into our community, that's probably one tweak that we would make. And of course, I continue my soapbox of wanting to attract research and development and high-tech industry to blend in with our, you know, 10, 20-year box stores. I think some of those research and development, those synergies that can be created with Northern or some of the other entrepreneurs that are in the area maybe have a much more sustainable, long-term kickback to the community than some of our retail. And not to say, you know, we're gonna not allow retail anymore, but I think we've been bitten, bitten by retail over the years, especially more recently in some respect. And I think if we could just attract some more diverse land uses, that would be helpful. And we do allow those types of things in our ordinance now. We have a very performance-based ordinance. It's a good ordinance. And the planning commission, myself, and along with the board, have been amending it piece by piece over, over the years. I mean, I don't know how many zoning text amendments we've done in the last 10 years, but there's been a number of them. Dark sky lighting was one of them. That was big. Mixed use in the general business district. So if you have a viable, a land use that's permitted in the district, you can have residential to go with that. What else have we done? We addressed tiny houses, short-term rentals, lots of different things.
Marijuana permits.
The marijuana permits, yeah.
Also going to track singles.
Yeah, there's been some discussion about maybe increasing the number of licenses now that we are maxed out of our retail, the marijuana retail licenses. So that might be something that the, the board might want to consider in the future. Not that we've been, you know, our doors have not been knocked down because of it, but, you know, that was certainly something that the planning commission recognized right away. Okay, well, we've approved two of these now and we're out of licenses, so.
Ernie, go ahead.
Okay, follow up a little bit on that. Future, if you watch the news, everything else, people out from the west and the southwest, they want to move up. They're leaving for one reason or another. They want to go somewhere where it's livable, enjoyable, and where there's water and that. So the question I have is, what can we do as a board or planning commission, whatever you want to do, to be able to advertise what we have here in the township to make it a desirable location for them to come and that? And what would we have to do to do that? Is it just a board function or is it a complete community function and that? Do we want to bring in people that much? Because once you bring in individuals, it's another ballgame completely. But this is happening now. If you watch it all, they're, they're leaving from the west to southwest because of the different things coming out there and that. And they're looking for other places to go and live. And we have a great community here and everything else along with it and that. So here again, I don't know if it's the board pro, direction or planning commission or whoever it is. Is it something we should look at either in the long term, maybe it's a short-term thing? Because things are happening in that. It's something to think about and that. Do we have ordinance and do we have planning that would maybe go that way? Because you look at short-term rentals, small homes, whatever you want, that. Make it agreeable for them to come here and live, even part-time and that, things like this here, so. We need jobs and affordable housing.
We have a lot of jobs. Nobody wants to work. Two states now have finally come out and said, "Oh, let's stop sending unemployment benefits. That might work."
Well, that's, that's, that's a lot of discussion can go in that direction because there are many, there, all the daycare centers are not open yet. So it's pretty tough for women to go back to work with children, so. I, I like the tiny house thing and if you're out and about in Trowbridge Park, there is a tiny house down. Do you know what street it's on, Jason?
I don't.
It's off of where Vandemum School is, where the street that runs east and west that would run right into the front door of the school. There's a tiny house down there.
Waldom?
I don't know that that's Waldom.
Then you got cars.
Oh, but it's maybe Waldom, but go look. It's just like so cute. I don't know that anyone's living in it, but it's sitting on a lot that does not go through to the city. It's a dead-end street. You can have those sometimes.
Another couple of other items I have wrote down is, you see a lot of these places are having pictures on their buildings and that. Gigantic murals. Do we have anything that would discourage them or?
No, we don't, we don't regulate art in the community.
Okay, that, that ain't, that, that question's answered.
Coming from Ashland 10 years ago, I've got, I've took, I've taken, you know, professional photos of a lot of their murals there. There, there's people that travel all over just looking at murals. I mean, if you go down to Plymouth, I'll be going there in a couple of weeks down the Road America and Plymouth has a number of murals and it just really makes the community pop. Now, those are in kind of the historic, traditional downtown scenarios, but there's nothing saying that, you know, we can't do something here too. I think the only inquiry I've ever gotten about a mural in the township was Queen City Burger.
And we do have some. They are on the store on Ontario and they are on the, is it called the bar?
Yeah, Rosie's.
Rosie's Doggo, yeah.
It's on Rosie's Doggo has them too.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So we have some.
Mirror, those are mural, mural-ish, but yeah. A lot of times murals tell a very historic story and have historic figures and landmarks. Yeah, we don't regulate art, so I'm, you know, huge supporter. I wouldn't say that we encourage it, but there's nothing that prohibits it.
Another one?
The other thing is looking at recreational facility or area on the south side of the township, south of the highway and that. I don't know if that's board or planning commission or where it should go. It's something that we need to look at in the future as to looking at the growth of the township. As to, is there something that we put a lot in the Lyons Field, a tremendous amount. We really don't have anything on the south side of the highway. Something that here again, it could come back to the board itself rather than the planning commission. But looking at the planning commission itself as to making sure we don't run into some ordinance over there or we have a problem with and that, so it's something to think about.
That's where we started the conversation on Hartwood, you know, trying to think about buying that property, some of that property. Now they're selling it off, the city, so I don't know. Maybe we'll look at an acquisition rat.
Yeah, if we can get 30 years at 2% as a former manager was successful at on a couple of recreational properties. When I first interviewed, Dennis Leavitt had left the interview, came back and he had this schematic of a property down in Hartwood. And it showed like three ballfields, two soccer fields and almost like a Red Rocks type of amphitheater down on the backside of gray walls or had a rock up, up crop like that. And that's always been in my mind since I started here. If we can pull something like that off. Because Marquette is one of the only places, I'm a huge music fan and, you know, with Upfront being gone, we used to have national acts come through Upfront. People will come up to Marquette. It's that kind of community. And Duluth is not that far. They've got some amazing acts. If you've ever seen the outdoor amphitheater in Duluth, a staged kind of thing that's permanent there, which I think the city should have down at the Madison Park, but that'll probably never happen. That would be very powerful. It could be a really, a revenue generator. And a campground. The Ashland campground was right on the waterfront and after, every year after expenses, that thing kicked back 50,000 to the general fund every year.
We got that water in Lake Spree, that land.
That 20 by 10-foot piece.
Not much. We've got 11 miles of shoreline.
It's all state-owned too.
Yeah.
I'll move to adjourned because we gotta get rolling here.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So we're adjourned at 7:10.
You could recess your meeting and then reconvene if you wanted or you can adjourn, whatever you want to do so that you can have your meeting.
Well, we don't really have any, we, I thought this was more of a workshop, work session.
Yeah, it was. I was kind of hoping for two hours because I had a feeling we'd go long, but.
I think you provided us with some great direction tonight, even with that discussion.
Well, we'll talk about the code officer. We'll talk about the annual trash pickup. You know, we'll chew on that and see, and we'll see if we can find out about the American Recovery money.
Okay.
But at least we got some ideas.
You want, you want, you want to make a motion, want somebody to make a motion to adjourn or?
Yep, if you don't have anything else on your agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
So Jason, you said the next...